This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Port Orford City Planning Commission to order. It's 5:30, Monday, July 8. Okay. We have been called to order. Let's have the roll call. Ed?
Here.
Commissioner Lavendall?
Here.
Commissioner Lawton?
Barely here.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lawton. And former Commissioner Burnt's term has run out. And I have just in my, and Commissioner Thielen is here. I'm going to segue into my chair comments here. And Commissioner Burnt has been, I feel, has been really helpful to the commission, done a lot of work, did the dark sky brochure, has done, served for four years. I would like to keep her involved in the commission, even though she's living outside of the area. So she cannot by law be, as I see it, be a member of the commission. But I would like to have her, if she would like to, and no one objects, to just remain seated here. If we're not having, we're not having a hearing today. And if we have a question we'd like to ask her, or if she'd like to raise her hand and be noticed, I would be willing to include her. Commissioner Ed?
Comment. I was under the impression that people from, oh, you're outside the urban growth boundary. Okay, never mind.
Figure out where those rules are that say that.
Yeah. The planning commission has to be composed of at least 50% of people that live inside the city limits. What does it say that they can't live outside the UGB?
I believe the exact wording is something along the lines of it's-
Not more than two non-residents of the city.
Do we have?
All right.
Well, I'm, I'm actually moving out.
Living within the urban growth.
I'm moving to Cedar Terrace, but we're technically still in town.
So you will be within the urban growth boundary?
I will be within the urban-
We can have two members that are within the urban growth boundary.
Well, does it say? Can you read that again? Two members?
So-
Each member shall serve a term of two years. Not more than two residents of the city living within the urban growth boundary shall be-
Within the urban growth boundary. Okay, yeah, I will be within the urban growth-
So you're good?
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate for us, I think, that Commissioner, former Commissioner Burnt has moved out. But I welcome, I welcome your participation.
Yeah, so my, my comment is that I live in Port Orford. And so I think that that should be some consideration. I am not within the urban growth boundary. That is true. But my address is Port Orford, 97465.
So I'm a real stickler for the law. And if you can find a lawyer that will interpret that so that you can be on the commission, I'm 100%.
Okay. Do we have a new, don't we have a new city attorney?
Do we?
We don't, but I think you're going to have to do that on your own dime.
Yeah.
Really?
I don't think a city attorney is not going to do-
The council, you could-
I would support that.
You could ask the council to make an exception.
Yeah.
If we don't have other applicants.
Okay.
Because we might not even have a quorum if panel is not-
So, sorry?
We might not even be able to have a quorum if you're not on the commission.
That was one of my points, yeah. And-
So, so this is actually a topic later?
Oh, okay.
It's on the agenda, so we can talk about it then.
Okay.
But I'd like to proceed with the meeting. And if, if no one has an objection, I'd like to ask you to remain seated if you would like-
No objection.
For this meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a lot of work with, Crystal has done a really great job. And I want to move on to that as soon as we can. So, let's move on. Minutes for June 10? Does any, does anyone have anything on the, on the minutes? Joseph?
On the first page, line 36, item 4A. It says testimony can be found at, and then doesn't say anything. I would like to change it to testimony is available at the end of the document. And then when I actually scan the signed minutes, I will have all the testimony at the end.
All right, thank you.
I would like to point out-
Is there anything else from the-
I hear somebody talking off in the distance.
Craig, the line 19. It says that I was present, but I wasn't. And you have me not present up in the box as having been absent. So I was not at that meeting.
Thank you.
Where are the minutes?
Thank you, Commissioner Lawton. Anything else on the, on the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Commissioner Ed, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Commissioner Lavendall, I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ed?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is also a yes. So the minutes have been approved as amended. Public comments is, do we have public comments on agenda items? Anyone online? Would like to speak? Okay. Let's get to the planning matters, the DLCD grant update. We have a really comprehensive, I think, packet here on the cottage residential planned unit development. So Crystal, would you like to lead us through that?
Yeah, the way I would like to do this is to kind of skip the definitions. They're in there because they pertain, and we can look back at them when we need to. But I think that it would be best to kind of see the layout of how this is headed and have some comments that I've gathered even since this was built. And so that I can make those today. And then we can discuss the two topics that I put on here for tonight, cottage residential and planned unit development. So if you would turn to page five. I do want to say that the state, I have a whole book now that I made because the state has been sending out a lot of guidance on a lot of these different laws that they have made since the pandemic. And those weren't coming out until about 2022, at the end of the year. And then we didn't work on this much in 2023. So the things that I was going to use for the basis have quite a few things in that I'm going to have to change. And there's a lot of things that don't pertain to us. And I'll try to explain that as we go through right now. So go to page five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Crystal. It looks like you have done an enormous amount of work. But I just, the definition, when we get to, I do have a question on the definition of your cottage-
Right, well, go ahead.
Residential. And I do want to know why in your definition you left out any requirements for landscaping in the cottage residential areas.
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay.
Oh, are you meaning in the definition?
In the definition.
Well, we don't, we don't normally-
Before, prior to, it was in there.
Okay, what did it say before?
It said, with the remainder, you know, left traffic left in it in a natural state or as landscaped open space.
Okay, I think you will find that information-
Further on.
In the actual code.
Requirement.
So let's, we'll check when we get, yeah. That's a good question. I think it probably-
I didn't know if I saw that, but-
Yeah, well, we'll see. It may not be there.
If it's not there, I'll be talking to you.
All right. So let's go to page five. And I've done this so that it starts to show which things are in the code, which things are proposed to be added, and which things need to be changed, or something like that. The thing is, though, you go down here and on page five already, so all this stuff with the regular print is from our code. So we get to number six, childcare facility. And the legislature has done a new, a whole new section on that. And we have to change it, and so that's something we have to do. And this is for all size cities. So that will have to come later, but I just wanted to point that out.
Change it so that it's no longer-
Well, it, we had to change it-
No longer permitted outright.
Few years ago. And I think it was a pretty wild ride for a lot of cities because they said that the planning commissions and cities had no authority over the layout of the childcare facility. And so they could be in all residential zones, I believe, and commercial zones. And what was happening was that the state was supposed to be reviewing how the layout was. But if they didn't get any input from citizens, sometimes it was interfering with the neighbors and things like that. That was one of the things that was happening. So they also had it up to 16 people could be in it. But now they've changed it. It's only an outright use in, I believe, in the commercial zone. And then they've, they've separated, which has always been separate, childcare facility and childcare residential use. And so I just need to work with that some. I don't, I don't have it all, so I can explain it.
Okay, thank you.
Just strike that for now.
Well, it's just going to be, I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Crystal, I have a question. Would that mean that an in-home childcare facility?
They tell you how you're going to be doing both of them. And they both have a change from what we had made our code fit what they required because we thought that was pretty important, that we didn't miss that. And then now it's different again, so, okay. And a lot of these are required by the state law, like residential care home and residential facility. And they have different definitions and stuff like that. You do have a new one, accessory dwelling, because that's added as number nine because I think that's what you want. I do want to point out, though, that we do not have to have ADUs. That's for cities larger than us that have to have ADUs. And there's also, and maybe, maybe I'm a little early on explaining this because there's also recommendations from the state, or I don't even think they're recommendations, they're requirements, that in these larger cities, they can't require parking spaces and they can't require, oh, there was something else they couldn't have. Anyway, I've got it all here. And so I'm going to bring that up when we get to that so that we can decide whether we want to do that or not. But we don't have to do it at all. And we don't, just because we're doing it, this is a common thing, ADUs. That's not something the state of Oregon has made up or anything. They're doing it all over the nation. So my assumption would be that we don't have to follow what the state is requiring the larger cities to do. Just because we're doing an ADU, we could do it the way we want. So that, that'll be up to you guys, whether you want parking and whether, oh, I know, it's utilities.
Yeah.
They don't want you to have, they don't allow utilities to be separate hookups in the cities. So that puts the onus on the property owner to collect utilities and stuff, I guess.
I don't, who, that's from, at the state level, you said?
Yeah, for the larger cities.
Oh, for larger cities.
Well, I mean, the whole ADU thing is written for larger cities.
Right.
We just can take what we want from that.
So we can make our-
Well, there's certain things that I would say, if we adopt them, we need to adopt what they're saying or call them something else. But this is not the case because ADU is a very wide-
Broad.
Generalization, yeah.
But that's important because it affects the cost of building an ADU, whether it needs its own water hookups and sewer hookups or-
Right.
Electrical hookups.
And then there's also situation with the ADUs is they're not necessarily proving to help with housing. I think there's something that would be good for a lot of people that have, you know, they need to house somebody younger or older or a non-family member that wants to live out there, you know, on a separate property or something, or if they want to make money. But I, the paper that we got from AARP, who's been working on this a lot, said that they're not paying off the way they would hope.
I would be interested in reading that.
You would be what?
Interested in reading that.
Well, you guys have them all. I gave them all to you at the beginning.
Oh.
Yeah, and we went through them.
Is that one of the ones that we've already read?
We, we basically went through it pretty fast.
I don't recall that point of being made.
It's in there. There's, it's a paper that was in our first packet, yeah.
I probably have it here.
You probably do. Okay, page seven. Well, six, yeah, six. So there's a couple of new things here. We have planned unit development, and then we have it referring to the chapters where we say how it will be done instead of three acres. And then we have cottage residential, which that one, I am recommending that we not call it cottage, whatever the state's calling it.
Cottage cluster.
Yeah, cottage cluster, cottage cluster. Because I think a lot of those rules that they have in that, and that's pretty specific, what a cottage plus, a cottage cluster is right now. Don't, I don't know that they're what we want to do. It would not make affordable housing in Port Orford to make everybody have a courtyard, common courtyard for four dwellings. And I, that's more the size of things we've been having. So a common, because a common courtyard is something that's costly. And you have to have a figure, figure out a way where everybody has to be part of a, there's, they have to pay for it all along. And that's something that's more associated with higher-priced housing in our experience. Yes?
I do have a question. So we have a cottage, whatever we're going to call it, residential.
If we call it cottage residential, that's just a suggestion.
So you have a lot within your R1 zone. They take out all the trees. They put in four little tiny homes with no landscaping, and-
That's a question of whether we even want it in the residential zones because it would be a smaller lot.
And then we have people, yeah, and then we have, you know, my concern is, I want to have smaller housing, tiny homes and all that. I'm just want to also look at the other side of that aspect. If someone comes in and buys like a whole bunch of homes and, you know, on a street.
But that would be part of the, that would be part of the requirements of a PUD. Or if you allowed them to have a cottage residential, that would be part of the, you would want that in the subdivision requirements for that.
Concern for maybe opening the door to a different, whole different-
Yeah, and you may not want them in the, you may not want them in the residential zones.
And you're, you're saying this would be a, under a conditional use. This isn't an outright use.
Well, it would, it would be, you would need some kind of a site plan review or a conditional use. And that's another question because they're not allowing them to have conditional uses in the city. But they have a whole team of engineers and everything. And so I don't know how we would, you know, I just don't know how we would oversee something that is so different without having, like we are doing for the RV park, where everything is laid out.
And he's-
And we could do that.
And we hire the engineer, he pays for it.
Yes, and then they charge it to the-
To the people that are-
Because people that are using, that are buying it, yeah. So I don't know. These are questions.
It's, you know, I thought, oh, this is really great. And then I went, hmm. And I started thinking about all the long-term implications.
Yeah.
So that was something we need, I would want to-
So we want to make a note of, of, sounds like, do, is cottage residential a use in an R1 or in a residential zone? So that would be something, we'll get into the cottage, we'll get into this in detail. We're just the-
So we're just kind of going through these things right?
I have a quick-
So you can see how they fit in.
I have a quick question about the cottage residential as well. Does this imply that it's all on the same tax lot?
No, because if you, well, if you did a PUD, it would be on the same tax lot. But if you did a cottage residential subdivision, it would be separate lots.
Different lots. Okay. So they're, they're separate, they're distinct.
They would follow different processes.
Oh, I see. So I wonder if the, should the definition in-
It does.
It says in one grouping.
One grouping.
Let's see.
Where does it say that?
I was looking at the definition on page, at the top of page three. Four or more singles, family dwell, detached dwelling units that are under 900 square feet in one grouping.
Right.
Yeah.
But a group, but then you would have to go to see what was required for subdivisions and what was required for planned unit development.
Which led me to-
I mean, all these things are still, you know, these aren't, these are just suggestions.
Right, yeah.
I mean, not even suggestions. They're things we have to figure out how we want to do them. Yeah.
Lot size was a question. That's what ordinance 278.5.010, with that re-
Where is that?
It's in 1728.
1728. Lot size in this?
I think, yeah, in our ordinance is, and it's also 1720.
1728. Oh, planned unit developments.
Yeah, because that's what you go, when you talk about cottage residential.
But that's, but we're not going, we would be going to the information that's changing this code. This one couldn't apply.
It was in your definition, that's why I asked. Because I was, I'm just-
Okay, let's find it.
I didn't mean to take up the whole reading on this, but it's sort of important.
Let's clear it up, so.
On your definition-
What page, girl?
Top of page three.
Page three, top of page three.
Okay.
Says this can be organized as a subdivision. Do we really want that in R1? But title 16 or maintain in one ownership in rental units processed through 1728. When I went there, it referred to ordinance 278. And there was another place where that it referenced.
You mean in the stuff I wrote or in here?
In the definition, when I went to 21728.
So what is your question?
I just don't know what ordinance 278, for, you know, what, 1970, I don't have a copy of it. So if we're referring to that.
I think it's, it's later in the-
Okay.
I think that's all counting up.
But I don't see 278, I see 1728.
Seven, you're saying 20, 1720 refers to a state code.
A state, an ordinance.
State ordinance, yeah.
278.4. I mean, I just-
I know, I'm, I'm trying to understand, though. I mean, where would that be?
So what page on?
I think I'm, I'm starting to think I have a wrong thing.
Is it right at the top?
Well, there's-
301.
Yeah, there's another place further on where it talked, and then it refers to 1720 and 1720. Well, when we get there, I just, it's, you know.
Okay, let's see if we-
You'll find, you'll find it when we get to the, when we reference back because I was trying very hard to find that.
It could be something wrong.
No.
I thought I saw that in later in your, what you're-
And then up here, 1728.01 in 10 refers to the same ordinance, but a different part of it. In our, in our-
Okay, but when we're proposing a new planned unit development, let's see if it's in the new proposal because this one has never been used, ever. This is a code that we have sitting here that has no purpose.
I do understand that. And what I, but I'm just trying.
You're trying to figure it out.
When you refer to something and I go to look it up, and then it refers to another ordinance, I can't, I don't. And that's, that was all. So I was just trying to do my due diligence.
The 1728 is, is later in the information, in the staff report. It's printed out.
Okay, you'll see it. No, I was referring to the definition. Go ahead, never mind.
I, I think this is a really complicated thing. I think we just need to get into it and-
What page is that on?
On page 18 is 17.28.
Joseph has his hand up.
So I looked up the list of past ordinances and their description. I believe ordinance 7278, which was passed in 1977, created the section of our zoning code, the sections of our zoning code, 1704, 1708, 1712, 1716, 1720, 1724, 1728, 1732, 1736, and 1740. So it was, I believe, the ordinance that actually created the code originally.
It's irrelevant, other than it was the basis.
Yeah, it's just-
It was the basis for a lot of the code we're looking at, I believe.
At the end, if that's one of those, they start doing that. And it doesn't, it just means that that was the forerunners. But I don't know. I, I do think it's complicated, and it's complicated to work on it.
It's very complicated. I think we just need to wade into it.
Okay, so let's just keep going. I, I think that our, let's just go to page seven. I think that our commercial zone is the kind of zone the state is recommending for everybody to have, which is a zone where you can do anything. And they don't want people taking their commercial zones and not allowing residential there and things like that. Well, we have it done right. And so when you go to page seven, you come to our commercial zone, and there's some things we can slip in there. And then again, I have, you know, after, this was already written, then I start seeing what the state is writing for some of these things. And so cottage residential could be something that we do there. And maybe we want it as an outright use. But if we did, we have to get very specific about everything because you're not going to have any hearing. You're just going to have a site plan, and they're supposed to come with everything done and let you look at it and oversee it. So I don't know. I don't feel real comfortable with that in Port Orford because we don't have a lot of staff eyes. We have your eyes.
I, I would be more comfortable if it was a conditional use.
A conditional use.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because then you hear from people and you can hear what's the problem instead of expecting Joseph and I to look at something. And, you know, we barely even get to go out and look at anything. We don't have time. So that's why the planning commission is so important.
I had one comment on the, on the commercial zone. I don't see ADU in that zone.
And that's another question, whether you really want ADUs because it doesn't have a lot size. There's no lot size in the commercial zone.
I don't know why it would make any difference.
It could make a difference because if you were, because you can do single-family dwellings, but you can do them on a lot that's 2,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet in the commercial zone, which you can't do in the residential zone.
But why would it make any di, you can fill a lot up with anything else you want in a commercial zone?
Well, you could, you could do it. You could say, but there's no setbacks either.
Right, well.
So you, that's a question.
I have a question for Joseph. Aren't we, isn't someone building residential attached to, you know, next to where the co-op is over there across from Circle? Oh, no, it's not Circle. Pinnacle 365? He's building some apartments or something in there? I think that's, yeah.
Not that I remember off the top of my head.
It's on, is that eighth?
Eighth is-
Ninth.
Ninth, it's on Ninth. It's on Ninth. It's behind the-
All those buildings, Carroll Mallies.
Behind the bike shop.
Yeah.
Oh, where the land trust used to be.
Yeah, behind the land trust. He's put in, he's put in electricity, underground electricity, remember? We, we, he's building, I think, apartments, yeah.
He upgraded the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, the existing building.
So we have that sort of-
But he does own that lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Behind.
The question is, I mean, it doesn't- The, the question is, I mean, it doesn't.
I don't see the problem.
Yeah, it doesn't make, it doesn't, if, if I can build a apartment house on a, in a commercial piece of property and not have any setbacks and.
So you guys would like.
No parking.
Saying you would like your ADUs.
I would think anywhere you can have a house, you should have, be able to have an ADU.
Okay.
It seems, it just seems like, I don't know, I haven't really thought.
Does everybody think that?
I just, again, what was your hesitation? So I just want to know.
Because there wasn't a zone, there wasn't a lot size, and there's not setbacks. And I didn't know if you wanted to allow ADUs just because somebody had a house in that zone, but I don't care.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to, I value your opinion, so I just.
I think it's something to think about. I think it's something to think about now, when we talk about ADUs, we can get into that, but I think it's a question. And, and the same with all the zone, any zone that has a, that's allowed a single family.
Well, that's the other thing, you have to decide whether you want them in both of the single-family zones.
Right.
I think we thought they would be.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And, and you, you have, you have them in both single-family zones, in both residential zones.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go on to, so we've kind of covered that. Then we go to our marine activities zone, nothing new except day use and picnicking. That's page 10.
And then industrial, yeah, the industrial, would, do we want to have ADUs there? Single-family dwelling is.
I thought that you might.
Yeah.
Where is this industrials on?
Page eight.
Eight, at the bottom.
Page eight and page, page nine.
Yeah, okay, so. So do, we don't have it in here, do we?
No.
And then we have to decide whether ADUs are outright or.
Right, or conditional.
Yeah.
You have a lot of things to decide.
There is. Okay, then, just, let's just keep going. Shoreland overlay, nothing recommended. Then we get to Battle Rock. That's another question. Cottage residential is under conditional uses permitted right now as a proposal.
And ADUs again.
Yeah, we have multiple family dwellings, so. Okay, then you get to, we start, we get to chapter 1716 on page 13.
So I have a question. There does not appear to be a lot of difference between commercial 4C and the 10MU mixed use.
They were, the 10MU was based on the 4C, except that it requires some design features.
Okay, but we've got, under the commercial zone, we've got Cottage Residential, but we don't have it under 10MU.
Would you like it? I think that's what you were saying, you might like to have that.
Oh, unless it's commerce, unless it's conditional. Use.
Would you like it? Are you thinking it could be a conditional use?
I, I think that they're so similar that I would think we'd want to consider that as well, yeah.
What was your, what was your comment?
My, my point is that we have several zones that have similarities in terms of what's allowed. So I think the Cottage Residential should be in all of those. The 10MU, the commercial 4C, and possibly the industrial, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say that in general, that, that it seems to me that the residential is the most restrictive, so if it's allowed there, you would imagine that it would be in the other zones too. That's kind of your thing?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm with you there.
No, we haven't, we haven't talked about that really. Okay, let's keep going.
Okay.
Okay, so let, no, we're just trying to get, we're just trying to move on.
Through it. And the only, sorry, can I say one thing? My gears are turning. The only thing about having, allowing all these things also in the 10MU and the commercial is that, is the no setbacks thing. I mean, then you have, you know, like the condos right next to, five feet away from the, you know, OSU field station issue, and the parking problem, you know. There's no parking requirement, right? So if a huge development goes in or cottage cluster, say there's five or six little cottages, but no parking requirement, you know, how does that work for the surrounding residences and businesses? That, that would be my concern there. Same deal with the condos next to the field station, you know, no parking.
Could that be added?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, you might, I mean, it's kind of the con, contrary to what the state is expecting, but I don't know how you can just smash all the little cottages in there with no parking.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a burden on the, you know, surrounding properties, I feel like.
Do we know if the 10MU has a larger portion of residential? Because I'm trying to think about the 10MU.
I might have some old documents that show that, but I haven't done any research on that lately. Nobody has that I know.
Looking at the map, I would say probably does, yeah.
Quite a bit of residential.
Right.
And so that I think is something we ought to consider.
I, I think that's a really valid point, and I think it's something we should think about when we get into
Yeah.
the meat of the cottage cluster, is whether we're going to require parking.
Right, because if we're talking about increasing density, you know, presumably each cottage is going to have at least one car, maybe two, you know, times four or five.
Visitors.
And, and visitors, exactly, yeah. I mean, so we have to balance, like, our need to create more affordable housing with the livability of, for the people there.
And then we get, we get to a point, and it's, is it really affordable housing?
Right.
Right.
We've already been down that road.
Yeah.
Well, and, and if we, if we consider a mobile home, or a, what do you call it, an RV park, so we required parking in, in an RV park in a commercial zone.
Yeah, and there are requirements for parking within the design.
For dwellings in general, yeah. I think that's, so it's something to think about.
Yeah.
We need to, we don't, we don't want to just pass that by.
Right.
Okay, page 13.
Can we add that to a list somewhere? Do you have an ongoing list of things?
What?
Can we add that consideration? Okay, I mean, I can write it down, but it's going to get buried in my notebook.
What is it you want added?
About parking considerations for.
That's one of my questions.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, chapter 1716 on page 13. These are all things, all except one that we have to get rid of. The state law tells us to. So you just see that we have a bunch of stuff that we're just going to cross out.
Yes, we're usually, we're going with the state, with the state rules on this.
On this we have.
Thermal insulation.
We don't have any choice, yeah.
Got it.
This is for the whole state. Okay, then the next one, we start our accessory dwelling stuff. And this is the accessory dwellings are the ones that are, it's up to us to decide whether we want them and how we want them. So we start looking at this, and we can go through it clause by clause, if you would like. I think that might be the best way. So the first one, to increase housing options, that's the point. So then we start going on page 14 into a proposed or suggested code. And you have to decide whether you like these things. So a single ADU with a kitchen is permitted accessory use to an existing single-family dwelling. Dwelling period, on an individual lot within 1R and 2R in residential zones, subject to all the following.
And possibly other zones.
So we could, yeah, and possibly.
But I mean, that's just our own, our own, we're keeping note.
So
So.
ADU is not permitted to be used for short-term rental.
Yes, that's, that's in our, our ordinance, in our.
So we want to make sure that agrees with our ordinance, the way it's written. Okay, B, no ADU shall be permitted on a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet. That would be residential zones.
Yeah, and if we decided that, yeah.
Okay, C, an ADU shall not be advertised or otherwise promoted as vacation rental.
Right.
D, an ADU is not permitted on an individual lot where more than one dwelling unit already exists through a permitted duplex, a grandfathered dwelling use, or other, or a violation. We take off the word other, that doesn't fit there. So in other words, if they already have two houses on a lot, however they got them, they have another one.
So would you say a, an additional grandfathered dwelling use, a, a secondary grandfathered?
Well, this would be an ADU.
I, I know, just reading it, the AD is not, it is not permitted on individual lot where more than one dwelling unit already exists through a permitted duplex, a an additional grandfather, or a.
Grandfathered dwelling use. In other words, some lots already have two dwellings.
So are there instances where there's one dwelling that has been grandfathered?
Oh, I see what you're.
Yeah, agree.
And a, a second grandfather.
A second, a second dwelling.
Yeah, grandfathered dwelling.
Or whatever, yeah.
Didn't we recently have a case like this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we, in that case, it wasn't an ADU, they had three or four dwellings on one lot.
Right.
And it's just coming in for.
That was the partition.
Right, to sign. Yeah. Okay, so we had, like, on that lot, we had three grandfathered uses. Okay. And maybe a violation. I mean, we don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. E, an ADU is permitted to have a maximum footprint of 750 square feet, including enclosed habitable space. So this was a number that a previous planning commission talked about, that's why it's in here. You don't have to have that number, you can have a different number or no number. Seems like you should have some number.
I like a number. That seems generous.
It does, it's very livable. That's, that's like a whole nother, I think of the houses on.
Yeah, so you might, if you want it smaller, this is the time to be saying.
Yeah.
So is that a question you want to come back to?
Yes, please.
If, if the houses that's on the lot is, let's say, 1,200, it's, it's, what percentage is that then?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, typically, it's, it's more than half.
Well, it could be bigger than some of the houses.
Yeah, exactly.
Is some, does loft area, is that included in the square footage, or is that?
Habitable space, I think.
It would have to be habitable, so I believe there's, there's an average of seven feet, like in a, in a Gable thing. It has to average seven feet, and that's called as habitable space.
Oh, I see.
You know, we have a gentleman here, I have an extra packet, if you. Okay, all right. Okay, F, a guest house that exists on an individual lot may be modified to include a kitchen when there is compliance with all the criteria of 1716090. And that's where we are. So do you want, if you want to look up guest house, I, or I'll go here and read it to you, assuming that it's.
Yeah, you had that in the definition.
Yeah.
So is this is saying that adding a kitchen to the guest house will convert it into an ADU?
Yeah.
Okay.
So would we want to add also, and the building codes, like the thermal efficiency and all that other stuff? Like, is 716090 does, probably doesn't talk about insulation or, or foundation or any of that stuff.
So I suppose we should say, and building.
And building, and universal building code.
Oregon.
Or Oregon building code, yeah. I would, I would think that would be provenant to include that. So we don't have someone turn a shed into, well, I did all.
Right, right, yeah. Joseph, does the building code compliance, does this make sense to you? Or you don't even have time to think about it, you're kind of.
So. I don't know if it's necessary, because when we're talking about building codes, there's a presumption that you're going to mod, adhere to universal building codes, because if you don't have that presumption, it's kind of hard to have any additional requirements.
I know, I, I wonder if this puts it into a category like the rest of it doesn't.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh.
I suppose we could put that at the beginning.
That all ADUs must comply with universal building code?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
An ADU with a, let's see, a single ADU with a kitchen is a permitted accessory use to any, to, to any existing single-family dwelling. Well, I think it should be probably the last thing. All ADUs are subject to the Oregon, to the uniform building or whatever.
Uniform building code is what the, and, and permitting, permitting an inspection, or I don't know. I guess.
To building code, we'll just say building code permitting an inspection.
Okay. It's a good thing for, to start with anyway, yeah.
Okay, so we.
Just saying K, so comply with all building codes.
That would be L.
No.
So then we go back to G, an ADU shall comply with all the setbacks of the zone. Applications for an ADU shall include a site plan with measurements showing that there is room for three dedicated parking spots on the lot in order to be approved for an ADU.
So there's your.
So that's the question of, you need three, and, and it's not three dedicated parking spots for the ADU. It would be really adding one, because most people probably have two.
Right.
I mean, that's the code.
That is the code, two.
Yeah, isn't it, Joseph? I'm, I think it is.
I believe it's a minimum of two. I think it's something along the lines of one plus one for every other bedroom.
Really, in our building code, in our, in the.
It's in, I think.
I might be getting it confused.
We have to have it in the, we have it in the.
Yeah, with STRs, and I think that might also be the requirement for RV parks. I'm not sure, and just base building code, off the top of my head.
Use.
RV parks are one plus one and a half.
Setbacks, lot size.
Okay, that's right.
Or one plus.
It's one plus one.
Half for every two.
Something like that.
I think it makes sense to have three, because there could be two in the primary resident and one for the ADU. Or one, one in guest.
And I, I think this is something that we're going to have to really look at and think about.
Yeah, I don't even see where it says that in our code, but I know that we've always had two. Wonder where we get that. Maybe that's building codes.
We talked about it with ADUs, or excuse me, with short-term rentals, and we talked about it with mobile home park or RV park.
I don't see it in here, but I might be missing.
We've also talked, yeah, with short-term rentals.
Our city code.
It might be somewhere else.
Maybe we want to just make a marker that that's something we all want to think about.
Mm-hmm.
And, and look up.
I don't want you guys to think too long, because at some point, we have to start settling this, because there's about 20 more of these.
Right. Well, I, my idea is if we can get through as much as we possibly can, and, and then come back to visit the things that are.
Yeah, the list of questions.
Sticky. Or, I mean, I, I guess, or, I, it'd be, it would be nice to be able to get through, at least one reading through everything. That's, that's kind of what I'm, where I'm headed.
Well, so.
But I don't know. It, it three seems reason, it seems reasonable to, to require that, and which would, which would also affect if we were to have ADUs in commercial properties, it would affect that. That would basically legislate a parking spot for an ADU.
Okay, so would we want the, so are you thinking that we might want to leave this, even if we are having ADUs, we are having ADUs in the commercial zone, in the Battle Rock zone, I mean, assuming that. So would we still want to have three?
Keep the parking requirement, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
I would say in the commercial, in the mixed use, for sure.
Definitely.
Commercial, I don't know.
As, as a matter of fact, to me, it seems like a lot of these conditions for ADUs address the cottage residential, too, and maybe they could be applied. Because we had questions on the cottage residential that fall under these same.
This is just one versus maybe four.
Right.
Yeah, parking would have to be different.
But, I mean, you can't really talk about one zone without thinking about all the others, yeah.
But I would say keep the parking, I would say keep the parking, no matter what zone we're talking about, for the ADU.
I think that's how you guys are kind of saying it, okay. I, residents and visitors of the ADU shall not block mailboxes. You didn't have to say that, but it's kind of helpful. I know on our street, you know, that's a.
We, yeah, we don't have many mailboxes in Port Orford, but.
Oh, we don't?
No, everybody has some P O box.
Not everybody.
Almost everybody.
There are some.
Especially in the Hamlet area.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm saying, not saying take it out, but it's not, it's not like a wide, a widespread issue.
True.
I have a question with regard to the ADU parking, I'm sorry. We're talking about an ADU as being a minimum of 750 square feet, is that correct?
Maximum.
Maximum.
Maximum, okay, and yet, we're requiring three parking spaces?
Would be one, one additional for the, for the ADU.
For the whole property.
We believe that, oh, two are required for a house.
Okay, all right, thank you for the.
That's something I, we're going to have to look up, yeah, because I don't know where it is. I mean, it's in most codes, but I don't know if it's in this code, I don't.
We can look that up.
I mean, most of the little cities have it, but I, I don't recall seeing it here.
Well, our, our house is so old that clearly wasn't required when our house was built, because there's no off-street parking for our home.
Maybe that's, maybe that's something to check with the building codes.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I think your house was in a commercial zone when it was built, too, probably.
Oh, maybe, yeah, because some of Jackson is in the 4C.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wiz's shop is in, is in 4C.
With all those little homes in the Hamlet, built in the 30s. Or had at one time, a garage.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Okay. Mailboxes.
Well, do you not want that in there?
Oh, no, I would say leave it, just in case.
Let's go to J, an ADU shall obtain separate hookups for sewer and water from those of the single-family dwelling on the property. What do you think?
I, doesn't that conflict with what you were saying earlier?
Yeah, but what I was saying was that we're not subject to that.
Oh.
I'm not, I, I have read from, there's a bulletin on ADUs from the state, and they aren't necessarily demanding this, and in fact, they're recommending lower SDC fees. And I think the, the situation, I think obviously, I want to, if I want to have an ADU in my house, which I can do, I can take my basement or an upstairs loft, would I have to get a separate water hookup and a separate sewer hookup? Just because it, it doesn't make sense to me.
But why would you, it's part of the existing house.
If this, if this was, if this was a, a law, I would have to, I would have to get a separate sewer connection with the street. Even though, so I'm.
Does that qualify as an accessory dwelling unit? Isn't that a separate structure from the main house?
Look at the, look at the definition. Definition of an ADU is either in a house, in an existing house, attached or not attached. There's three, three situations an ADU can be. And as far as, as far, I mean, I think the only argument for having a separate hookup is for, well, there may, there could be other arguments. The argument I would make is that the, the size of a sewer line is, is governed by the universal building code. So you can have so many fixture units on a sewer pipe. It's like four toilets and two bathrooms and two.
The scale is off.
And once you get up to a certain point, you've got to put a four-inch line instead of a three-inch line. My feeling is use the three-inch line if it's there and it's already hooked up.
Right, so it depends on how, what the capacity is of the main house, maybe.
Yes, and it's a lot, it's a heck of a lot easier to tap in, if you are doing a separate dwelling, to tap into the line, the feeder line that goes to the street than it is to go dig up the street and pay a million dollars.
Well, that's partially why we were talking about that, is a cost savings also, yeah.
So what are you, what are your, what is your thinking as a group?
So, question first, would that be dependent on how many bathrooms?
Yes.
Kitchens are already there?
That would, yes, that would, so if you add, if you tip the balance.
Yeah.
In a water line or a sewer line, you would have to put in a new sewer line and/or a new water line. I think it might be better to leave it off of here and let the city, because the city is, is, we're, we're not in control of the SDC fees, the, the planning commission, we can make a recommendation, but the city is, has some ideas about what they want to do, and I think it's the city's.
So what would we?
Could that be added in, or at the city's discretion, or something like that? I mean, if we don't have something.
Yeah.
It could get overlooked.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Well, it, if it, if it's, if it's governed by the UBC, it won't get, it won't get, it, it, they, they count them. They say, when they get their permit, how many fixtures are on this, on this line?
Okay.
I have, I have a suggestion, what if we say an ADU may obtain separate hookups? Depending on, or according to universal building code, or depending on.
Or just say it the other way, that they would have to get a hookup if they exceed the capacity defined by the universal building code.
That's, that is reasonable.
And that, and that's what should happen anyway.
Right, and, and that is really, if, if we have, add this number L, it would have to comply with that anyway. I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think that J is actually necessary.
Let's take it out.
Because, because L, L should have, handle that, both on water supply and on, actually, the city will govern the water supply, but the, but the county governs, or the state governs the sewer pipe.
But the city might not want to allow ADUs to hook up to existing.
They may or may not.
Yeah.
That's why if we give them the option, that's why I say it's out of our, it's really out of our hands.
Well, I still think we should provide recommended language.
I have to agree.
I agree, yeah.
I think if we said, would have to provide separate, in, only in the case that they exceed the capacity as defined in the building.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, give me the words.
Yeah. Okay. An ADU's.
Shall obtain.
Right.
Separate hookups.
Or, or, or should we resize?
Or sewer and water.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Only, or.
Only in the case.
Only if, yeah.
Yeah.
Their, their capacity exceed, or, has exceeded that, you know, defined in the.
The UBC.
UBC. So, you know, we're just saying, the, they only have to get the hookup if they exceed.
Is this for both sewer and water?
Sewer and water.
I would say sewer, is there a capacity for water? Probably not.
Not in UBC, it's in the city.
That would be for sewer, then.
The city is water, so this would be for sewer.
Yeah.
I don't think we can, I don't, no, I don't think the UBC has. No, they probably do, they must.
Yeah.
They must.
Because you, yeah.
Put for both, for now.
For both, then they can change it.
I would be willing to work on that, from a technical standpoint and make a recommendation.
I'm putting your name by it.
Put my name by it, and I, and I'll make a recommend, and we'll, we'll bring it, we can vote on it, whatever. I get what you're saying.
I just have it in there, and then it's an option, so people don't think that they have to get it, because we don't want them to have to get it, we would like them to, right, use the cost.
Right.
But we also want them to be in compliance.
We don't want backups through their shower.
Yeah.
If we wanted in the.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, then we have L.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, what about K?
Oh, it was already there.
That's what I said.
How we have K.
We have K.
Mm-hmm.
Second, it might sound like Commissioner Lawton might have something to add.
Yes, what about separate electric meters?
Electric meter.
Do you require a separate electric meter?
I don't believe that that's standard.
There can be a sub-panel.
They may want to do that. They may, but I don't think, I don't think it would be something that we would require.
Do you think the co-op would have requirements on that?
I'm sorry, can you get a little closer?
Do you think the co-op would have requirements on that?
The Kuzkuri Electric?
It could be, they, they could. I doubt it, but they might.
Well, we, we can, we could say that the city shall require a sign-off from.
Mm-hmm.
Sewer, from the.
That's a good point, that would be, well, that would be in planning.
I think that makes a lot of sense, because I do. If a case.
You mute.
Where the owner, property owner, asked for two separate electric boxes, and and I know someone on staff at Kuzkuri Electric who thought it was two separate lots. So they wouldn't automatically give two separate meters, if that's kind of what this is regarding, yeah.
And they, they don't like to put more than one meter on a building. So they can shut the whole thing off.
So we'll just say the city shall require a sign-off from.
From the public electric.
Kuzkuri Electric or utilities, public utilities. What should we do for subdivisions and stuff like that, either? Okay, before we leave this page, what kind of size are you thinking about? For these ADUs?
Kind of what, so, size?
Size. I feel like instead of coming up with a random number, maybe we should research that a little bit more.
So the one that I know of is six, I believe it's 650, or one-third of the, or not larger than one-third of the house.
Or it could be based, yeah, it could be based on the.
Most people don't know what their house is, do they?
Right.
So I think 750 is.
Okay, I just looked up ADU size limit Oregon, 800 square feet. The maximum size of an ADU may be no more than 75% of the living area of the primary structure, or larger of two units in a duplex, or 800 square feet.
So 75%?
Yeah, that's Portland.gov zoning requirements for ADUs. Maybe a different scale, because Portland.
Portland is so.
Yeah, it's a different scale than here.
Yeah.
I think we need to scale down from that.
Yeah. But that is.
I would say, I would say 650, rather than 750, but I don't know, just a number. We can revisit that number? I know you want to get this nailed down.
No, I just, I just want to get something nailed down.
How about 700, it's in the middle?
600, no, we should.
Yeah, I don't think it should be random, but maybe we can look at what some other small towns are doing.
They are all random.
Are they, oh, so they're.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's, that's how they decide, the same way we're deciding. It's like, uh, it's kind of like.
And I just don't want it to be an arbitrary decision, you know what I mean?
I know.
Because the lot sizes here are quite a bit larger than the minimum lot size.
So are your streets.
Yeah.
Bottom.
Yes, tell us about it.
Thirty by 25, so 30 by 25. 30 by 25 is 750. That's pretty big.
That's pretty big, I was going 20 by 30.
20 by 30 is. Still big.
If we're doing a maximum, shouldn't we also do a minimum?
No.
No.
600 square feet is, but does that include loft space, or if it's livable, like you said?
If it's livable, it's, it counts. It's not square foot, it's not square foot, it's not footprint, it's.
Right.
It's habitable space.
Versus where you can stand up.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be happy with 600.
600, okay.
And, you know, we can do some research and come back.
Yeah, do we want to do a percentage as well, or just kind of?
I don't know. 600 is, I mean, I don't know that there are any houses out there that are smaller than 600.
There's none that's smaller, I know some in the Hamlet were 800.
Yeah. It seems, 600 seems good.
Mm-hmm.
It's bigger than the smallest houses you can build.
Right.
Yeah.
It's bigger than the one that Guy and Bella and Paul put, just built on Idaho.
That's six, no, five?
It's in the fives, yeah.
Yeah.
450. Yeah.
It does have, yeah, it has a loft, but I can't remember if it's considered livable.
Okay, let's go on.
Let's go on, 600, and let's go on.
Okay, so conditional uses is what the next section, this is general, things that apply to conditional uses. And you'll want to look on page 15 to see. We always felt like we had a blank slate about multifamily dwellings, and people have asked on the planning commission, why we don't have some landscaping and things like that. So this is an attempt to bring some of that in, so you go, the first one is they have a conditional use, they have to do a site plan. Then they have to have this stuff on a site plan, A, a map of existing features on the property, including, well, and adjacent uses, topography, wetlands, natural hazards, adjacent streets with widths, and location of underground and overhead utilities. B, proposed ingress and egress. C, proposed underground and overhead utilities, including water and sewer lines and lighting. D, all proposed structures. E, proposed parking spaces with identification of ADA spacing, areas for loading and unloading, and travel lanes with widths and improvements. F, sidewalks. G, proposed landscaping. H, setbacks. I, proposed shelters or structures for mechanical equipment and refuse. I, proposed shelters or structures for mechanical equipment and refuse. And that's the end. So, so I kind of took some of the stuff we did for the RV park.
So we're, just to focus my own mind on where we are, so this is for. Church, nursing home, convalescent home, retirement home, for multifamily dwelling units. These are the conditions that will have to come. So they'll have to get a conditional use permit, and this is what the planning commission will be looking at. These are the criteria. Sidewalks, landscaping, setbacks, okay.
Yeah. So what do you think of that? Anything you want to go back to?
I like it.
Oh, you, you guys are easy on this one.
Mm hmm.
Well, it's pretty basic.
It looks good. No, you've done, you've done your homework.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Page 16. Then we get into manufactured dwelling park. And this has quite a few rules from the state that we are all supposed to be. Complying with. So, um. I have a lot of. Notes and stuff like that. First is the definitions and. Uh, the state thing that came out, the state recommendations, they're not recommendations, I think they're requirements. Is that. The definitions have to meet. Certain things, and I think I've got them pretty much done, but I think I need to add because what they say is. ORS 446.8 or something like that, follow, you know, following that. Well, I didn't put those in there because I saw, because I don't want us to. Have something that goes out of date every year because they keep adding to things and. But I think we better say ORS 466. Complying with ORS 6, 466 and not put the exact citation in there.
Mm hmm.
So that people know where they, they can look. And so that was, that's going to be what I hope to do. And I do have it here. 446. And then I looked at their stuff and I thought, oh my God, we don't have it, but we do. We just don't have it in the definition, but I think this is a good place for it. So, um. I'll just kind of go through these. Manufactured dwelling park may be permitted as a conditional use, provided it meets the requirements of the zoning. Chapter 446 of Oregon revised statutes. And all of the following standards. Oregon State Building Codes. Three is improvements in manufactured dwelling parks shall include paved streets, roads and parking areas with fire hydrants. And roadways designed to accommodate the movement of public fire vehicles to provide, provide protection to the entire park. Four, a parking space shall be provided for each manufactured home space on the site. Now this includes. Manufactured homes, mobile homes. And prefab homes. Now, that's the definition. So then, um. We have parking space shall be provided for each manufactured home space on the site. In addition, guest parking spaces shall be provided within 200 feet of the. Of each manufactured home space. At a ratio of one guest parking space for two manufactured dwellings. That goes along with what we did for the RV park. That's going to be residential too. Parking spaces shall have durable and dustless surfaces adequately maintained to city standards, et cetera. Manufact, five, manufactured dwelling parks shall not be used for transient occupancy stays of less than 30 days. We could call it vacation rentals or maybe it's good to put that in there.
Mm hmm.
Do we want to say? Does transient occupancy mean for money?
Yeah.
Because there is a place in there, okay, good.
Well.
One of the, one of our definitions, it meant, it meant for, for, uh, for, for pay.
Yeah, it actually says that in some of them.
But I don't, we don't, if, if that's, if, if this covers it, I think.
I think that's what it. I don't know.
Can we just reuse the language that we use for ADUs? Not permitted to serve as.
Vacation rentals.
Is not, let's see, is permitted to serve as a long-term rental, not permitted to be used for a short-term rental in increments of 30 days or less.
Oh, I see, this is. I, I think it kind of covers it because.
We should say in manufactured dwelling parks.
So it's not coming and going, coming and going?
Oh, yeah. And plus you don't want people building it for that.
Right.
So then we would say. Manufactured dwellings.
Shall not be used for short-term vacation rentals.
Manufactured dwellings, mobile homes. And prefab homes.
Mm hmm.
Shall not be used for vacation rentals or transient occupancy stays.
Of less than 30 days.
Yeah.
Great.
And we need to see the maps, number six, showing topography, wetlands, hazards and other site conditions. A site plan drawn to scale shall be provided. I mean, you could require that it. Be by a professional. I mean, I don't, I don't like. I, I wouldn't want people coming forward with a. Napkin drawing or something that doesn't have the right. Measurements.
To scale. Mm hmm.
So you could say an accurate, an accurate, right?
We could just require that under the site plan, yeah. Yeah, a site plan.
Accurately drawn.
Uh.
And you can always.
Professional site plan?
I don't know if it has to be professional, I could draw one. But it has to be done right.
Well, it says to scale, but yeah, accurate.
Drawn to scale.
It seems to me that, uh, the paperwork that the city requires. Is like just a drawing, a sketch. I could be wrong, but.
Well, we were, we were fortunate with the RV park because even though they didn't. Necessarily initially, um, know quite what they were supposed to do or didn't do it. We were dealing with people that weren't always doing RV parks, both the engineer. It was nice to have the engineer.
Yeah.
Engineered drawing because you knew that. All, all the stuff was accurate that you were looking at.
So.
That was the intent.
Maybe that's the term we need, engineered site plan.
I, I, well, I think that this is just for the. Application when they have a, there, there will be a temporary plat, right, that we, that we, we look at.
Well, that's what we would want to say if we're not going to require an engineered plan at the first. Do we want it to be, do we want it to have a, um. What's it called? Uh, one, a temporary plat or a.
I think.
Initial plat?
I think a site plan drawn to scale. I mean, you take out your ruler and say, no, that's not to scale. Go get it, go, just give me a, give me one that's drawn to scale. I mean, drawn to scale means something.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
I've drawn a lot of maps to scale and I never paid anybody. You, you can do.
Yeah, I could do it myself.
Yeah.
Get some graph paper. Yeah.
I could do, but so then you would go to a, and the person at planning would say, this is not to scale, this, I don't.
You would go to an architect or an engineer or.
Yeah, or a.
Construction guy, I, I, yeah.
Or a.
Designer, architectural designer, yeah.
Um, I'd just like to say we have 40 minutes left and so I wanted.
Keep moving.
I know we're in the meat here, uh, but let's.
Let's keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Utility easements, including those for city services, electricity and other public facilities shall be shown on the site plan map. Provisions for television and telephone, I don't know if you want telephone anymore. Or if you even want television.
I don't think we need that.
Yeah.
It's true.
Okay, we'll just take that out.
Yeah.
And then sewer and water hookups locations shall be included. The perimeter of the property shall have setbacks that comply with the zone and where the zone has no setback requirements. The setbacks for the use shall be as follows. Because you're talking about a larger scale thing, so I thought you might want setbacks.
Me, yes.
Front yard 10 feet, side yard 10 feet, rear yard 10 feet. Do you like those?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should have setbacks in all the zones.
Do what?
I think we should, I think we should have setbacks in all the zones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, setbacks shall be landscaped with vegetation that is expected to grow six feet in height at maturity. And thrive within the local climate without a necessity for ongoing watering. That's starting to get tougher.
Mm hmm.
Approved six, I mean, I never have had to use water on anything until the last three years.
Yeah.
Yep. Approved six-foot fencing may be substituted for landscaping on some sides of the property subject to planning commission approval.
Can we say seven? I think the county allows seven foot fences, right?
I thought that they were six.
I thought it was seven in, in the county code.
Uh, I want to say it's six and a half, but.
Could be, it used to be six.
I could double check.
Seven.
Yeah, I also actually think it's seven. But six and a half is what I tell people so that way they don't inadvertently go over the seven feet.
I think it's, I think it's, I'm almost 100% sure it's seven feet.
I am, I am too.
Mm hmm.
That's a good deer.
Yeah.
Approved.
That foot matters.
Seven foot fencing. May be substituted for landscaping on some sides of the property subject to, okay, we got that. Okay, 11, the manufactured dwelling parks shall have engineered plans approved for storm and surface water management. And erosion prevention and sediment control in compliance with our chapters. Okay, 12, depending upon the size of the manufactured dwelling park, the planning commission may require a playground, open space or other common facilities. 13, a manufactured dwelling park shall show evidence of city water, city sewer and water or state-approved community water and sewer systems. Which, by the way. End up in the city's lap sometimes, usually.
Hmm.
The city has something. Maybe not here at this time. Because all this stuff is contingent upon this.
Mm hmm.
Okay. 14, any locations for accessory buildings to be permitted in the manufactured dwelling park shall be approved as an element of the site plan. For the manufactured dwelling proposed for approval by the planning commission. 15, manufactured dwellings in a manufactured dwelling park shall include a water closet. Water closet, I don't know.
It's very European.
There might be better. Laboratory.
Be a half bathroom.
Shower and a kitchen area containing a sink.
Aren't, aren't these manufactured dwellings already, uh, governed by rules requiring those things?
Probably.
And there is a separate.
This is the kind of thing you get, you, one of you guys could look up if you like.
Someone could modify there.
Maybe we could say functioning.
Yeah, we might not have, we might have.
I'll, I'll look it up. May, it may be required.
Because nobody answers my calls.
Hmm.
Well, people don't answer most calls nowadays. Okay, so, um, I'm just going to put your name by that.
Yeah.
You want to check with the seven foot at the time or are you pretty sure?
All right, I'll check with seven foot also. I'll ask Joseph.
Delegate.
Okay. Um, that's fine, as long as we have somebody doing it. Okay, 16, in a manufactured dwelling park in which individual lots are separately owned. Because they do allow manufactured dwelling parks to go into subdivisions. The same person shall own the manufactured dwelling to be situated thereon and the owner of the lot shall agree that if the manufactured home is removed from its foundation. The owner shall, within 30 days, you know, you can read it.
Mm hmm.
I got this from somebody. I didn't think this one for sure.
This is just to, to, to keep just.
Hmm.
Vacants.
Things from sitting there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and not leave a mess behind if it's moved.
Okay, now we're at planned unit developments. And this might be where we had some questions. Oh, I see, ordinance 278. Yeah, that's what you were talking about. It's crossed out. Proposed to be crossed out. Okay, the, so purpose and intent. The PUD conditional use permit process provides an opportunity for the property owner to preserve unusual physical features. That are part of the site by providing for equivalent use of the remainder of the property to comply with the intent of the zoning. Historical, topographical or other distinctive features of the property may be protected or enhanced through the PUD. This could, could include, but is not limited to features such as roads, common facilities, open space or other. And may include varying housing types. Well, that's kind of. A long run on sentence. Yes, but fixed sentence. A PUD may include varying, oh, we have it there.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. A PUD may include varying housing types. Examples include subdivision, cottage, residential, manufactured home, park. RV park and condominium development. The intent is to develop land and housing in a manner that creates an attractive, healthful, efficient and stable environment with flexibility. Then you go to the app, the procedures for the application. They have to have a pre-application. We might want that on some of our other things too, where. They come in and learn what they're supposed to do ahead of time and that gives us a chance to learn what they're supposed to do.
Mm hmm.
To focus on it. But I do think that, um, if we do this kind of stuff where we're requiring it for some of these difficult things, we should require a little bit more in our fees.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have, it's almost free. $270 or something like.
Mm hmm.
Takes a lot of work.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Okay, then it says the following documents are to be included. And then a bunch is crossed out. Knocked out again until you get to. Existing site map showing physical features of the site narrative that addresses the PUD. So is this, is this the one? We didn't already say that it has to be. We want this one to be at scale two, right?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Use scale language.
I would say the same as for manufactured. Dwelling parks or whatever that was. Yeah.
Existing site maps drawn to scale, showing physical features of the site.
Yeah.
So keep a ruler on your desk.
Okay. Proposed uses, building locations and housing units with density calculations. That comply with the zoning or explain a vision to meet a housing need. With reasons and findings as to any purpose for the development and a proposal to dispense with such density. Again, it's all run on, but. I'll try to separate it.
Yeah. You, you, yeah, you got the idea there.
Me and President Biden. They're all saying.
Did you see that?
They're saying he can't do a sentence and I'm thinking that when I look at mine. Okay, three, description of unusual physical or cultural features. Of the property which can be conserved and thus provide the applicant with equivalent use of the property as a result of the PUD process. So it wouldn't be equivalent use, it would be equivalent. You want an equivalent, in other words, how many, what can the density be? So it would be equivalent density.
Yeah, okay, so. I have a question.
Yeah.
So this is. This is like if you had a piece of property that had a bunch of trees that were just beautiful over on one side and you wanted to. Save the trees and rather. and you wanted to save the trees, and rather than break it all up and have houses around like a grid, you'd wanna pile them all in the corner so that this, so you could leave the patch of trees. That's what this, that's one of the reasons.
Do this, um, you could also do this with your four units.
With your.
The cottage residential.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I know, this is a, this is the overarching.
Yeah.
PUD is, is the overarching for all these things.
Is there a too close? You know, is there like a minimum distance? For situating those structures?
Not necessarily. Because if you wanted things to be close.
Mm-hmm.
And then you wanted to save the rest of it. You could do that.
Mm-hmm.
That, you could do that in a PUD. You can't really do that in a subdivision because you have all these separate ownerships.
Hmm.
So a PUD is the opposite of a subdivision. Normally, it would be.
Cause it's all owned by, it's all one lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then I think we need to. Um, I don't think I've done it yet. But take the subdivision requirements and see how we could accommodate cottage residential in those, because that's a lot of what people are wanting.
Mm-hmm.
Individual lots that could be grouped, but they're still owned in.
But individually owned.
Yeah. And that's what you could easily do, I think, the way it is now in our commercial zone. Because you don't have any size, and, um, Guy Brennan was almost there at one time. And I wish we could have accommodated the road somehow. That's the trouble. You have to have, somebody has to own the road.
Well, just, well, okay, so the, the partition that we recently did. We addressed this. Wasn't there gonna be some agreement about joint ownership and maintenance of the road?
Well, in that case, we did a, um, an easement. The what, where we already had the houses, you mean?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. So we let them do it with an easement, because a road already existed, and we were having a lot of trouble getting through that, and it was your choice to allow them to not have to bring it up to city standards.
Right.
And I don't, I think that was probably a good choice in that case. I mean, there was so many violations. We had it, it took us a year getting through that process, and they were trying. I mean, nobody was fighting us.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was a good choice as well. I'm just wondering if we can sort of apply what we did there to this scenario.
Somehow, when you build a new road, I mean, you wouldn't ness, if you build a new rotor and access that has to go to different ones, and it's not already there, and it's not.
We could make, we could make, yeah, we could make a requirement that.
Yeah.
It has to be paved, but could we also make it an easement situation?
I think you could, but you still have to have somebody in charge.
Right.
Even on this other one that we did, at some point, if they divide those lots, that has to be addressed.
Yeah, I mean.
So one owner owns the property, and then the others have the easement on that. Is that, is that correct?
Well, I mean, that would be one way of doing.
That's what they, that's what they did over in the corner, o- over.
Right, on Agate, yeah.
Yeah. So somebody owns the property.
The owner.
I will give you, you're, you're, you're buying this other lot. You can use my road. I'll give you an easement to use my road.
But you're responsible for maintaining it.
And this is the problem.
So if we're.
Nobody wants to do that. I mean, with a whole bunch of car, you know.
Okay.
Four families going, so.
Well, I mean, so we're, are we talking about people owning individual lots in a cluster here?
Not here.
Oh.
If you do a subdivision.
Yeah.
And that's what might be better in the long run than, because I don't see a lot of people wanting to have a bunch of rentals that they take care of.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it would be nice if they did.
Like Silver Springs over on Porterford Loop. They've got a bunch of cottages all in that, back there. Yeah, similar, but it's a.
Is that the one you were showing me today? No, that one was us.
It's a big, they have a kind of a big gravel parking area, you know?
Is that an older subdivision?
I think so, yeah.
I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Or if it was on a, if it was on a public road, that would solve it also.
Right, if it was public.
On a public road.
Or, I mean, can we make it a requirement that there has to be an agreement for maintaining, you know, between the residents?
Public road, then it has to be brought up to public standards and public size.
Right, but if it's not a public road.
Still has to have fire.
Yeah.
But just talking about like the maintenance of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Who's gonna maintain the road?
It's a question.
Yeah.
I think we can advise people to have a road maintenance agreement, but we can't require it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be surprised, yeah, because.
You can have it, but it doesn't, they don't do it.
It doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, I mean.
It, it's not worth.
And if they wanna let their own road fall apart.
Yeah.
What does that have to do with the city?
Well, then, then they come to the city and they want the city to just.
And just know.
Well, I mean, that's just what happens.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move, let's move on.
Can I, can I ask, or to make an addition on, um, page eighteen under purpose and intent? And we're talking about these unusual physical features. Could we say historical, topographical, environmental? Can we add that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, any of this, if it's confusing, we don't want it that way, you know?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I think we should encourage people to keep what is already there.
If my stuff is confusing, then we need to change it.
Yeah.
Not you, I didn't mean yours was confusing. Okay. Number four, I guess that's where we are, proposed circulation pattern, including indicating the proposed street ownership.
Mm-hmm.
Five, proposed open space in common areas, including appropriate access with pathways or sidewalks. Six, site plan with topography, culture, or history with and notations of special conditions or objectives that exist to warrant departure from standard zoning requirements. In other words, they should be doing a narrative that tells us this. I mean, this is not just for a free-for-all, this is for something that does good for them and the city. Okay, six, site plan, I think I did that right.
Mm-hmm.
Seven, proposed method of water supply and sewage disposal. Eight, setbacks around the perimeter of the property that comply with the zoning. Nine, proposed landscaping plan that shows landscaping and any fencing proposed within the perimeter of the site in compliance with the zoning. Economic and supporting data to justify any proposed non-residential elements. In other words, you don't just say you're going to have a recreation building, or you're going to have a commercial. There has to be some way that that is supporting that property. Otherwise, go do your commercial downtown or something.
For the seven-eleven.
Yeah.
Sure agree.
Okay, um. Nine.
Lighting.
Nine, ten, we did ten.
Ten, eleven.
Eleven.
Lighting to comply with chapter fifteen seventeen Outdoor Lighting Code. I suppose we should have that on our others too.
Mm-hmm.
So that should go on manufactured dwelling parks.
Yep.
Analysis of the proposed development in relation to the neighborhood and the streets.
Shouldn't you also include that on all of them? The analysis?
I agree. Probably.
What do you mean by analysis? Who does that?
Well, they need to show how it's connecting and why it's gonna work.
Hmm.
I mean, if it was a big enough one, we would want a traffic study, but.
Right.
You know, we haven't gotten, we haven't been having that size. Somebody should be able to look at the streets and the size of the streets and say whether that would be your choice as a planning commission. Is that gonna fit there?
Right, is this a narrative, or is it like drawn up in the plan, or where does, how does?
It would be narratives.
Okay.
Probably should say that, right? Narrative with, um. With, um, road sizes.
Yeah, or narrative.
And things like that.
Yeah, narrative that describes, yeah.
With. Um, street, street sizes. Accesses is. Anything else?
Um. Does that?
And con, and other contextual features.
Yeah, is that, um. I wonder if the proposed circulation pattern would be better there.
Oh, proposed, proposed circulation plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what I mean, and?
Yeah.
And then the property, proposed street ownership could be its own point.
And what?
Oh, sorry, but you have that in number four, proposed circulation pattern? And it seems like that would be, it's more closely related to.
Yeah, it kinda goes with that.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So I was just saying, having the proposed street ownership be its own thing, or.
Combined with twelve.
Yeah, or combined with twelve.
Okay. Next page. Then we get into declaration of covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements. If they're not, if there's going to be. Well, as applicable. Then the applicant shall submit a consolidated plan that includes all that is required under municipal code, chapter sixteen sixteen, including a tentative plan in compliance with second sixteen oh eight oh two oh. Maybe you want a tentative plan for the, um. Maybe you want a tentative plan for the manufactured dwelling park too.
Yeah.
I mean, those seem to help a lot, because then they, you look at them and then they go back and.
The same, just like we did, did we do that for the mobile home park?
Yeah.
Yeah, the RV park.
It became a tentative.
Yeah. There's a few back and forths.
Tensive and final plan.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it kinda stretches it out. We don't wanna do that too much. I suppose if somebody came with a perfect plan, you know, and it was all taken care of, and they're used to doing it, you could just say, this will be the final plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gives them an opportunity to.
Yeah.
Compliance.
Yeah, because you always have a right to say, this is good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then we're on page twenty, right? Did we already do this?
It, yeah. Is D, what is that?
Applicant shall include analysis of the PUD, this is D, in relation to adjacent streets. That sounds like the same thing.
Sounds like number twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could, they can be combined.
Well, that's because of thunder prior discussions.
Oh.
Okay, check web.
Assure there are not negative aspects.
Twelve, right?
Yeah, combine, mm-hmm. So are these gonna be, the number, is the numbering gonna continue? Is C gonna be fourteen? Cause it doesn't seem like there's another heading.
I don't know. I think I just picked them out of somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So E?
E, applicant shall provide a timeframe for completion of the project along with explanations or charting of activities to be completed. The city will schedule. And we, we kinda need that, you know, um. When you get into these kind of things, they're gonna need extensions, and you're going to be fixing up the extension requirements.
Mm-hmm.
And some of them, it's just probably gonna be understood from what the planners around the state are saying, that they're all taking more than a year.
Mm-hmm. Or, I mean, they just have to demonstrate that.
Yeah.
That it's moving forward.
Yeah. Okay, the applicant shall provide a timeframe for completion of the project. We already did that, right? F, the city will schedule and provide notice of a planning commission's public hearing. Well, we always do that.
Mm-hmm.
But we, I guess it's okay to say it's subject to a public hearing, but it's gonna be under that.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be under conditional uses, I think. Let's see where we do have it.
Those type one, it's, it's.
Accessory dwelling, so cottage residential, yeah. That's, those are under conditional uses in these zones. Yep. All the zones. So, yeah, we don't have to say that. Yeah, they're, that's how they are in each zone. Okay.
G, are we?
Plus a G.
Following any approval of the tentative plat, the applicant shall comply with chapter sixteen twenty final plats. And that's all spelled out. I'm sure.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
It's already in there.
Yeah.
So.
Twenty-one?
Well, I don't have.
Twenty-one? Criteria for approval of a PUD.
Maybe this is one I brought.
Couple more pages, I think.
Okay, oh, I see what these are, yeah. Sort of, mostly.
Not getting off that.
So. Then we have criteria for approval of a PUD on page twenty-one. And so that's compliance with Porterford Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies, compliance with the provisions of chapter seventeen twenty-eight, compliance with title sixteen, cause of the, that's the subdivision stuff. T tentative plats and flat, plans and plats, so, yeah.
It seems like, um.
Lacking code.
A could be sticky.
Because.
Because it hasn't been updated for so long.
Yeah, because it's.
It was updated in two thousand nineteen.
Well, it's just, it doesn't have any teeth, so to speak, you know, and it's also, it feels like kind of subjective. I mean, I agree with having it there, but it just seems like in the past.
We don't have to have it.
Well, I think we should have.
No.
But it's still part of the whole.
It is, but how do we make it actually work? You know, how can we?
Well, I mean.
Decline something on the basis of.
Pretty clear when you go through here. It's all policies, and they, they should be able to find whether they're complying.
It's, it's also about vision.
Right.
Yeah.
But this is, but you've made a point. This is the only one that we're requiring the comp plan.
It is.
So do we really want that?
I mean, I think I would want it everywhere, instead of only in one place.
It is kind of everywhere. It's supposed to be everywhere, but you don't make everybody look it up. I guess, I think the reason I probably put it in here, and it probably can be dispensed with, is that when they're doing a PUD, which is such a free-flowing thing. You know, they really kind of should have a vision for what they're doing. It's not, it doesn't give them the vision. In other words, you do a subdivision, the vision's there. You're doing a subdivision, you do it this way, this way, this way. You're doing a manufactured home park. There's all these state laws and everything. This is how you do it. This is the spacing and everything, plus our thing about. But when you do a PUD, there's no, there's no vision for it, except theirs. And I kinda think, I, I guess I thought that maybe they should be.
They absolutely should be consulting.
Using this stuff to support some of their narrative of why they think that that's important.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it's important to include it.
It is, yeah.
Because if we don't, if we don't require them on a PUD to think about their project, they just think it's a free-for-all.
Oh, yeah, there's been a lot of free-for-allage for, you know.
Well, it's, it helps to understand the character of. Well, it's, it helps to understand the character of the town.
Yeah.
And kind of to create sort of a theme that works with it.
Mhm, right.
But I do think that our, um, I do think we had a, Dave, the guy that was doing the RV park, had a really good attitude about working with us, and we're not always gonna find that.
Right, so should the manufactured dwelling park also require that they consult the.
Well, I think there's a whole state law that they have to follow, too, when they do that. They already have a stuff about spacing and all this stuff. It's not.
Okay. It's not as open.
There's already a vision.
Yeah.
Ideally, yes.
Yeah, ideally, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in a more permanent kind of.
I mean, because this thing, you know, if you look at the comprehensive plan, I just feel like it's, it's open to a lot of interpretation, for example, like blocking views right on the bluff, that kind of thing. You know, that's the kind of thing that isn't really consistent with the comprehensive plan, but it happens anyway. You know, so can we really like?
We don't have any, I mean, the answer would be, we don't have any requirements that make that happen.
But that's why they're, because it's not specific enough, the comprehensive plan.
It's a vision.
Yeah.
But it is, it is something.
It is something. It's better than nothing.
Yeah, I think, I think we should leave it in.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we take it out. I just, I just wonder if we could reject something on this basis, you know what I mean?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, we're a commissioner, we, yes, we can. And it could go to city council, but we can reject, we can do anything we want.
I think it could be.
Mhm, okay. Yeah, let's give it a shot.
I, I guess all I was trying to do is, like, I have seen people trying to abuse. I mean, that's the only way I've seen PUDs in operation where they were often trying to abuse them.
Right.
To get a free, free ride.
Yeah, no, I definitely.
That's not what, I mean, it has an intent of, what is it you're trying to preserve? Why is this better than just following a strict code?
Right. Yeah.
And we would help them with that. I mean, when we have free applications, we could go right through here and say, these are the things that you should be trying to do with this piece of property, because it's on the bluff, or it's in downtown, or.
Right, so it's like, yeah. We'll see how that goes.
Can we move on?
Yep.
So that would be, yeah.
So this is all, um, you know, streets are adequate, so this kind of goes with what they've already shown us. Ability to do it in the timeframe.
Storm and surface water.
Utilities.
Overlay.
Organ laws. ORS ninety-four, yes, so that's for, um, if they're doing a condominium or something, they have to follow the state law.
Mhm.
Excellent.
Does.
And then the rest is all crossouts from language that we had, I believe.
So, Crystal, um.
Until.
How is, how are the criteria for approval different from? Let's see, procedures, is that the last? Because there's, um, elements, the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions was already mentioned, number thirteen on page twenty. So are we just kind of reiterating?
We are.
Yeah.
Because one place we're asking them for it, and the other place we're saying.
It's an absolute requirement.
Criteria, but.
Okay.
The other way would work, too, where we don't actually say this, we just.
Or all the procedures are also the requirement, the criteria for approval?
Right.
Yeah.
Criteria, and we could call them criteria.
Mhm, right. It just seems like there's a lot of redundancy.
If you think, let me see, let me go back and, how did we start this other one? Purpose and intent. Yeah, it could say procedures and criteria.
Mhm, yeah, and then they, they could be combined.
Okay, I like it, and I'll see if there's anything missing. So I checked page twenty-one. For what we need to combine. Okay, let's go on. So we have a few pages of.
PUD.
Um, PUD that's crossed out from what we have now. And then we go to page twenty-four. And this is the stuff out of the subdivision ordinance. Of what?
I have a quick question. On page twenty-two, all the crossed out, um, number, um, letter I in the right column, because of varying types and complexities of planning unit developments, the speci- specifications required herein are minimum requirements, and greater detail may be required.
Where are we?
Um, page twenty-two.
Oh, I.
I in the se- in the column to the right.
Or would you like to add that?
I don't know, I, yeah, I wonder if, you know, because we might get through an application and then decide that there's something else that. Does everybody, what does everybody else think about that? There might be.
Gives us options.
Yeah, like we need to see some extra, yeah.
Discretion.
Mhm.
Okay, let's go to page twenty-four. And these are requirements that come out of the subdivision. The purpose of this chapter is to provide the necessary linkage for subdivision plat to work hand in hand with chapter seventeen twenty-eight, which addresses the site and the integration of zoning with physical and cultural features of the property. So, yeah, this, so, this is to tie the subdivision ordinance to the zoning.
PUD, okay, there's two necessaries there in the first sentence. Let's see, necessary linkage necessary for this.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So this goes into tentative plan and final plan, which we already have.
Mhm.
In there. Then we go into the criteria for cottage residential development. Do you want to do that next time?
Let's, I'd like to extend the meeting for a little bit. You've done a lot of work. I'd like to honor that by running through, finishing this.
Thank you.
Bye, Dave.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Does anyone against extending the meeting?
How much longer? I sort of am.
I kind of am, but are you comfortable with where we're at?
Yeah, I think we can save this till next time.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
If you, if it's okay for you. Because this is a big topic, yeah.
Let's do that. I'd like to extend the meeting just to get through the rest of the agenda.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting for twenty minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Or did, were you making a motion?
I didn't know I would entertain one.
Oh, you're entertaining. I didn't hear the entertaining. I move to extend the meeting another twenty minutes.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Head second.
Commissioner Sec, uh, Head seconds it. Any discussion? I'm gonna call the vote. Commissioner Lawton, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
You're a trooper. Would you care to vote on extending the meeting for another twenty minutes?
Sure, I vote to extend.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bro, or, not, sorry, you're not a Commissioner, Commissioner Lovendal?
Yes.
Commissioner Head?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thielen is a yes. So we're gonna extend for twenty minutes without a break. Um, okay, so we're done with that. And we have been given a reprieve of twenty minutes. So. Discussion items, planning clearance is approved since the last meeting.
I'll be as quick as I can. Driftwood Elementary is renovating. There is some septic, there's a septic tank being fixed on King Street.
What was that?
There's a septic tank being fixed on King Street. On Twelfth Street, a couple properties are putting up fences. It wasn't exactly a planning clearance, but it seems relevant. Uh, there is a sign that has been put up, uh, at nineteen forty Oregon Street. Uh, it's for the Jubilee. And then, uh, two new homes, one on Eleventh Street, one on Twelfth Street, both of them have previous water accounts. Uh, one was previously active, and one was just paid for prior to development, but it was paid for prior to going into the period of water curtailment.
Is that one of the, the giant house that's going up behind the, um, gas station?
Uh, no, the Twelfth Street one is, um, right next to the water treatment plant.
Oh, okay. Does that, I don't recall a, a permit, um, or a planning clearance application for that. Maybe I missed it, but the big house that's being built behind the gas station just kind of went up, like real fast.
Which gas station?
The Chevron, the Chevron, the active gas station.
It was brought up, um, I'm pretty sure I brought it up at this meeting. It did have planning clearances and was approved.
It had a well.
I remember it.
Yeah, you said it put in a well. Did they also pay it, pay their SDC fees?
I would have to double-check. I don't feel comfortable giving a yes or a no at the meeting tonight.
Should have.
They should have, yes.
Thanks for getting back to me on that. I appreciate it.
Mhm.
Trying to be quick.
Uh, CUP extension discussion.
Mhm.
Um, I would, I have downloaded some more information from other CUP ordinances, which I have not. That's what I was gonna bring. I didn't bring that with me. But I wanted to just kind of make a short list, if, I don't, I don't want to go into an extensive discussion on this, but do people have points they would like to consider that they, that we can just briefly write down and move along and, and revisit it again?
Yeah, I just, um, I know Penny has also, I think, provided language in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
I'm not so much about language, but just like, should there be a limit on the time, or?
Right, yes, there should be a limit on the time, but I think, um, I think we have to make the language so clear that, that it can't, that, that it's definite, that we can't have this extension year after, year after year. It's open to interpretation and it's, needs to have teeth, yeah.
There is no limit on time at this point.
Yeah, basically.
Or how many times?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's something we really need to discuss.
And there's no explanation of what they have to show us.
Right, what it means by substantial construction, that's very.
Well.
What they show us.
I mean, what it is that they show us to show that they're working at it.
Right.
One, another one I ran across today was, um, have conditions changed in the the land use in the, of the area around it, so.
Yes, that's a big one, because we have a situation, someone got a permit like seventeen years ago. Lots have happened in that, in some riparian area.
So land, change in land use in the surrounding area. Uh, what was it? I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't, I thought I was gonna bring it, but anything else just off the top of your head? We're, this is, we're not gonna get this done in one other.
Right, no, no.
We're gonna be working.
Joseph is.
Yes.
Uh, so I have two things. One, substantial construction is not defined in our code. I have found a definition from Curry County and a definition from Luba. Uh, the definition in Curry County is something along the lines of they have gotten all the permits that they need, and the definition from Luba is that they've spent ten percent of the total cost of the project on construction. Those are general ideas. Those are not to be taken verbatim. I just wanted to bring that up since it came up. Additionally, uh, since this has been on our agenda for so long, it might behoove us to move this higher in the agenda for next month, so we can at least get some discussion going. Can I get a consensus on that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I don't, but I, I think our primary thing is to do this.
And, Crystal, you don't have a problem if we do that?
No, I'll, I have plenty of work to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I, and it, so another definition that I just saw was, um, for, uh, and this was for a house, substantial construction would mean the foundation was in.
Right. Yeah, I was just gonna say, because you, because ten percent of the total cost of the construction, but if the foundation isn't even in, then what, you know?
Where is yours from?
It was from a, a town.
Okay.
In, in Oregon. Another one was, um, oh, it just slipped out of my brain.
Hate that.
Uh, it, I have, I'll bring all that stuff next time.
So I, I just thought of something, and this is in connection with what we just went through. And that is that, um, there was no clear written documentation that was presented in terms of like a contract, or, so maybe we need to include something.
A report?
Right.
Like a, a report from the applicant?
And that's, that's common, that they show what they, show what permits they have.
Yeah. Put together a report for the planet before the hearing.
Right.
And another thing is a fee, is a fee for a, is for a, it's very common for them to have, like, like I would just looked at one, it's a four hundred dollar fee to have an extension.
Sure.
It should be, and there should be a fee for an appeal. I can't believe.
Right.
That we don't require a fee for an appeal.
Fees for, uh, extension, fees for, for application.
Yeah, some of them are.
Oh, we have one for the application, but we would, uh, need one for an extension.
For an extension.
Oh, okay.
And then also.
And some of this stuff might be, um, you know, you put it in the code, and then we have to take the time to make a form that asks for those things.
Mhm, yeah.
I'll, I'll bring up, I'll bring some forms.
Which is where we're really behind as a city, because we're using the same applications that we've used ever since I've been here, because we've never had the money to spend the time, because it takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Joseph worked on some, I think, when he first came.
Speaking of which, um, the application to be a planning commissioner needs to clearly state that, a commissioner needs to live within.
I don't think this was in my version, and I don't know when it gone changed. It might have been when it went, when they did the codification.
It's neither on the website at the top level, nor is it on the app- application.
Okay, let's, we're gonna get to that in a second.
I have one more question, or one more comment about the CUP extension. Is there any way to add language that lets the applicant know that they are responsible for dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's? They are responsible for making sure that they have all the necessary.
Burden of proof.
Signatures and everything, instead of this, well, you didn't do that, and you didn't do this.
That's supposed to be their burden of proof, and they have been told every time.
Okay, well, we, I think we need to put it in the language, because there's a lot of blame happening, and the onus is really on them to keep track of everything and make sure that they have all the signatures and everything that they need to keep moving forward, because it's actually an indication of how.
We're to blame for one thing.
Yeah.
I mean, at the city, which was the not getting that thing signed. And I wouldn't say we.
Well, let's not, let's not deal with that.
Just saying, yeah, I.
It's one thing we can be blamed for.
That's a thing that they should have noticed.
When they noticed that they.
So one other thing is that the.
They should have noticed.
It's very common is, is ninety days before the, before it expires, they have to, they have to apply and pay the fee and have, present all their information.
Ninety days before it expires, yeah, let's do, let's put that.
I saw that, too.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are some good things.
Yeah.
And we will continue this, uh, and get it done.
Next time.
Next time. Well, we don't get it done next time, but.
We'll move it forward next time.
We'll move it forward. Okay, so computer, city residency requirements for commission members. Go ahead. Did you want to have something to say about that?
Oh, yes, um, so I can repeat. I think any kind of form, uh, application required and information on the website should indicate that people need to live within the city limits or, uh, urban growth boundary.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you.
So we use a general form for all commissions, and different commissions have different requirements, but I can put the link on the form to, so people can know where to go to get that information.
I just, I, I wonder, too, if, you know, we have so many people, so many, so few people stepping up to serve, if, you know, we should consider what Pamela said about, I have a Port Orford address, I live in Port Orford, yes.
So, in the code for the, uh, the chapter two that we've been talking about, where it says, you know, they have to, only two people within the UGB, it says that if there's a vacancy that lasts for more than sixty days, the city council can appoint somebody, and I don't think that that appointment would have any restrictions on it. So if there was a vacancy for sixty days, they could appoint someone who'd lived outside.
Because we've had a vacancy for, we have a vacancy for, what, since Mr. Malone left, right?
No, Carol filled it.
Is that, oh, really? Are we at capacity?
We have one, we have once, we have one now that, uh.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Burns gone, yeah. And we have one.
Sixty days, okay, well, that's not that long.
Okay, so. Okay, so. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, let's move on, I want to move on.
I wonder how that got in there.
It's the same for, I think, all the commissions.
Yeah, but I mean, they must have done it when they were doing the codification.
Uh, we've got non-conforming uses on here.
I put that in a, um, this is grandfathered uses, I just wanted to tell you that, um, we've made one decision of how to handle something, like, we had a application. For a. Extension of a dwelling, in other words, it was a non-conforming dwelling built in nineteen forty-nine that wasn't compliant with the setbacks. At first, I thought it wasn't going to be compliant with the. Lot lines, that it was going over the lot lines. But, uh, the person is going to tear down the stuff that goes over the lot lines in three places. And so that's gonna be a requirement, but the decision also was to, um. Say, we're not, we're not gonna say they can't improve that house just because it's not following the setbacks, we don't want. To cause a situation where things have to go into ruin if somebody wants to fix them up. And so if somebody wanted to fix it up, and we said, you cannot expand into the, um. Setback area, in other words, anything that's new is added has to be in the setback area.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not gonna make them tear it on the house to be able.
Right.
Are you going to make them stay within the footprint of the building?
The footprint of the building goes into the setback.
I know.
No, they, their new addition cannot go into the footprint.
But it will go on to the.
It'll be added to the house, but it won't.
Not in.
It won't cause, it won't increase the, um.
Okay.
Violation, what we'd call now a violation, it was a.
I just think that's kind of what. You're not, we're not changing the use of it, and it's been, I think, I think it has a land use, I think it has like a vested thing, if it's.
Yes, but I will add, I did a, I did a listserv thing with all the, um, planning people around the state. And some of them were very violently, they've got to tear it down, they've got to do this, they've got to do that. But a few of them didn't agree, and they called me separately, they didn't want to put it on listserv. But they called me and they said, we don't do that in Non-Falls.
Can I ask if this is in the Hamlet?
I don't know where it is.
No.
It's not.
It's not in Hamlet.
So, so.
It was just a decision, and I think it's a standard thing we can live with, probably.
I think it's something that we can.
Won't raise huge issues, we're just not increasing the non-conforming use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Uh, new residential zone. Uh, who put that on?
Yeah, we talked about that last, I brought it up at the end of last, but then I, when I was looking through the packet today, I noticed that. That the art, I was having trouble distinguishing between the R one and the R two. But I noticed that the R two zone said, the art, the R two zone is designed to be applied to residential areas where higher density housing is appropriate. But that's basically what I was suggesting, another residential zone, so that we could limit the high-density development to certain areas. I don't have an idea of where the R two is.
R two, there's, R two is.
Kind of a long one oh one.
And there's some R two down off of, of California.
Oh, I see.
Where you used to live.
Oh, thirteenth? R two's on Idaho, it's this purple.
Yeah.
It's this purple here, like along Idaho, Agate Beach, twelfth, a little bit of twelfth.
Here's Hamlet Street, it kind of goes in here, and it.
We got five minutes.
Anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, I am relieved because there is no possible way we could fill these zones.
Yeah, no, but it, but it seems like it's already in, it's already in there, but, but there doesn't seem to be any difference between the classification between the two zones. I was trying to figure that out during the meeting.
You can have multifamily in the R one, can you?
No.
Um.
I don't believe so.
Twelfth Street.
Okay, that's the only difference?
Yeah.
I think so.
Hmm.
They have duplexes and.
Yeah.
Might have.
And, and, yeah, well.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, let's move on.
Yep.
Okay, other business, applications for appointment, Burnt and Boydson. And I'm going to, uh, consider the Burnt one not legally applicable, so we're not gonna vote on.
Well, okay, yeah, if it's vacant for sixty days, right?
So, sorry about that, but. If a lawyer tells me that that's, that you.
Can I approach the city council?
You can go to city council.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Boydson. The application is here. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at it, I've looked at it, I actually know Jerry. Uh, I think it would be a. A plus.
So if that spot is filled, then Pamela, then there are no other available spots?
Right.
Not right now.
Hmm.
We have had more than five. We had seven when I first joined.
And it was brought to my attention, I thought so too, and, uh, it, it, in our code, it says six, five, and then, uh. Joseph just referenced the, uh. City council meeting where they changed it from seven to five, evidently so there wouldn't be an issue with quorum, with, uh, quorum, with seven members.
Got it.
So I think, and I, I think there was, yeah.
Okay, I had forgotten.
That's what.
Yeah.
Do we have any motions on Jerry Boydson?
I mean, so can I have a question, are we able to have more than? Than the maximum, no?
No, it shall be five.
So basically a vote for Jerry is. Is saying that Pamela will, will no longer be on the commission.
Pamela is not on the commission now.
Right.
Her term is, has ended, and she doesn't live in this UGB.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying she's going to the city council to see if they'll entertain.
Yeah, she can do that.
Don't you normally have an opportunity to talk with, um, a new commissioner candidate?
I, when I was first on the commission, I wanted to do that, but there have been several that appeared that, that put in commit, uh, applications and weren't here, and I've.
Oh, okay.
It, it's.
Yeah, minor.
Yeah, I think it's minor.
Okay.
We have a motion?
I'm gonna move that we accept Jerry Boydson on the plan, as a planning commission, or we put his name forward to the city council as a planning commissioner.
We approve, we approve the application, then, whatever, move forward. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Law, uh, Lawton has seconded it. Discussion?
I'm not on the planning commission, but I would like to say.
Yes, please do.
I do not think this should be an end-all and be-all, because we always have people having to go off. And there's many times that we haven't been able to find people to fill the positions, and I hope you won't be discouraged, but that you will watch.
And I, as I said in the beginning, I'd like to keep you involved, and. It doesn't look like legally you can be on the commission, but I want, your opinions are great, you've done great service, I'd like to see you stay involved.
Yeah, I'm curious to see what the city council has to say.
I'm also, I mean, I. See you still being part of this, you know, but if we keep, you know, we don't know which way the city council's gonna go.
Sure.
And. Your city and your address is determined by the postal service, is where a route ends and begins, has nothing to do with the city boundaries. Or they, you know, they just, they have a way that they do it, so it's not really. Anyway, it was, it's very hard, but I. But there'll be some more vacancies coming up.
All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton, C.S., uh, Commissioner Head?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendall?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen, Z.S. And, uh. Stick around. Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, good.
Bummer, I'm bummed.
Here we go, uh, city planner comments?
No.
No comments, planning commission comments?
Briefly. Are we, oh, we're at our twenty minutes. I just would like some consideration, we changed to Monday nights at five thirty, I love the five thirty. But there are some conflicts, I'm wondering if we can consider Tuesday night, back to Tuesday nights, because historically we always did it on Tuesdays, and Mondays are just a little bit tougher, and I know I'd have to miss one a month, every other month. And, um. So I'd like to.
Yeah, I, I second this, Mondays absolutely do not work for me at all, I didn't advocate hard enough for myself.
Monday doesn't work for you either?
No, it doesn't.
I don't like it, but I.
Yeah.
See, and.
Crystal doesn't like it.
Yeah, I do like, I like that we're doing the second week instead of the first week, and I like that we're doing it at five thirty, because it works better for, because I'm not retired, and it, three thirty is the middle of my workday. But Mondays just absolutely do not work.
Uh, Drew. What's your name?
Justin.
Justin, it happens all the time. I believe Commissioner Lawton was one of the commissioners who also requested a change to Monday, because Tuesday conflicts with fire training, uh, so, uh, maybe we stick to Monday for next month, and at next month, discuss it, no?
I'm okay to let go of the Monday meeting, it sounds like there's more than. One person who, it becomes inconvenient.
All right, well.
What, I wonder, what'd she say?
She said she's willing to let go of Monday. If you're, if you feel that way, I think we should shift back to Tuesday.
Are you there? My screen is frozen.
The time that we talked about, September or October.
Review in October.
And we'll review.
Review in October, yeah.
Okay, uh.
So we're keeping the second, second Tuesday then?
Second Tuesday, five thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Future meeting would be, uh, next, would be August thirteenth at five thirty.
Okay.
August thirteenth, five thirty, okay, and then planning, other planning commission comments?
Nope.
Uh, public considerations. Future meeting, August thirteenth, five thirty, adjourned, thank you all for being so great.
Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-five.
Yeah, thank you.